So we're going to start the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Ottawa, October 15, 2024. Roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Here.
Gainier.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Baron. Mayor.
Here.
We have four present and one on the phone.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to your logic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready? Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut that the minutes of a regular meeting of the Council of the City of Ottawa, Illinois, held on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, be approved as recorded in the permanent files of the city clerk.
Can I get a second? Commissioner Gainier, roll call.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron. Mayor.
Aye. Is there anyone wishing to appear before the council? All right, so now we're going to welcome up the 2024 Kiwanis Kids. The one thing that I'm going to mention before doing so is, just for clarity for everybody, any conversation, or I should say better explanation of any of the things that we're voting on, I welcome you to all to listen to me tomorrow morning on WCNY. I'll be talking about all of it and you can get far more information then than you're going to get tonight, so.
Are you inviting them to skip school?
Oh, yes. I'll call all of your, matter of fact, we have a teacher here, you'll work on special for me. And then, and actually speaking of that, the other thing that I'll mention before we get this started is if Facebook's not lying to me, I believe one of our council members' birthdays today. So when we call him up, make sure everyone wishes him a happy birthday. So with that, we're going to call up our council for the evening. As mayor, we have Leo Alvarez. Commissioner of Accounts and Finance, we have Luca Fernandez-Yups. Commissioner of Public Health and Safety, we have Olivia Entwistle. Commissioner of Public Property, we have Zoe Phillips. Commissioner of Public Improvements, we have Fiona Gawarski. Our Police Chief is Bryce Lucas. Our Fire Chief is Thomas Miller. Our Corporate Counsel is the Birthday Brennan Heaver. City Engineer is... Exactly what he wants in front of all these people. City Engineer is Griffin Novotny. City Treasurer is Kalen Dis. And City Clerk is Kalen Warner. So welcome the 2024 Kiwanis Kids.
Now is time for Commissioner Michael Kraut's report.
Cities General.
Wait a minute, we're going to do this, I'm sorry. Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut that the bi-weekly salary payroll of October 11th, 2024, in the amount of $632,443.8 cents will be approved and warrants issued.
There a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Michael Kraut. Gainier.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Now is time for Commissioner.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut that the bill Monthly Expense Report dated October 15th, 2024, showing expenses in the amount of $2,245,018.3 cents be approved and warrants issued.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Commissioner Michael Kraut that monthly, that the monthly financial report of City Clerk Shelley L. Monks for the month of September 2024 be received and placed on file.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Is there anything else?
Yes. The Cities General Corporate Fund is where sales tax and property tax revenues are deposited. Currently, our sales tax revenues are at 50%, and since we are halfway through our fiscal year, we're on pace to meet our budgeted revenue numbers. We have received four property tax distributions from LaSalle County, and will be working with the City Treasurer to complete the city's tax levy. I'd also like to mention something about NCAT. North Central Area Transit, or NCAT, provides demand response door-to-door public bus transportation, transportation for the County of LaSalle Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. through 6:30 p.m. All NCAT's vehicles will have a ramp or lift, making the fleet accessible for folks who use a walker, wheelchair, or other types of mobility devices. Twice a month, a bus travels to Peoria for individuals needing to meet medical or personal needs out of the area. NCAT also, NCAT can also connect individuals to intercity bus transportation services traveling to Chicago, Rockford, Bloomington, and Champaign via the Heart of Illinois, wait, Illinois Greyhound Route. We also provide rides to the Amtrak Station in Bendota where folks can go anywhere. All rides must be scheduled in advance. NCAT will arrive at your pickup location at or around the requested time and take you to the front door of your destination, then return to take you back home or whenever. NCAT began service in 2012 when the City of Ottawa took on responsibilities of guarantee, or granted, grantee, and operator for the transit program. Since then, NCAT has grown from a handful of employees working out of a small conference room in City Hall to over 65 employees, 34 vehicles, and a transit center on Chessey Lane. Each year, NCAT ridership increases. Last fiscal year, last fiscal year, we provided just over 72,000 rides. This year, we are on trend to provide over 77,000 rides. Most folks use NCAT to get to work or medical appointments, but NCAT will take anyone anywhere. Our vehicles traveled over 630,000 miles through, throughout the county last year. That's essentially driving around Earth more than 25 times. NCAT couldn't do this work alone. They work with many community organizations that help to promote and support the transit service. NCAT is proud to be LaSalle County's safest and most economical transit provider. You can find more information about NCAT services and how to schedule a ride by visiting their website, www.ridencat.com.
Now is time for Commissioner Gainier's report.
Mayor and Council. Moved by Commissioner Gainier that the quote from Nicholson One Communications in the amount of $21,900 to purchase six radios and microphones for the fire department be approved and paid for grant proceeds.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor and Council, the Ottawa Fire Department has also received a grant through the Illinois Emergency Management Agency. The Ottawa Fire Department is receiving $31,486.80 to be used to purchase portable and mobile radios for emergency response. On tonight's council agenda, we have quotes from both Nicholson Communications and Communications Direct for the purchase of the radios for this grant.
Roll call, please.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Is there anything else?
Moved by Commissioner Gainier that the quote from Communications Direct Incorporated in the amount of $7,870 to purchase a radio, speaker, and headset for the fire department be approved and paid for from grant proceeds.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Is there anything else?
I would like to announce on behalf of the Ottawa Police Department, the addition of a new police canine. K-9 Iron will be joining the force after the completion of training with his K-9 handler, Joel Smith. Officer Smith and K-9 Iron will be in training for four weeks in Iowa, starting at the end of the month, returning to patrol in December. K-9 Iron is a two-year-old male, yellow lab, trained in narcotics detection and tracking. K-9 Iron will be joining K-9 Muskie and K-9 Facility Dog Rookie as the Ottawa Police Department's canines. The K-9 purchase and cost of training was made possible by the kind donation from State's Attorney, Joe Navarro. We would like to thank him for the financial assistance he provided and continued support of our police department.
Thank you. Now is time for Commissioner Pearson's report. Next is the Police Chief's report.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to update you on the integration of flock cameras in our parks. As you recall, we partnered with Commissioner Pearson and the Parks and Recreation Board to install live feed security cameras in our parks. The 13 cameras installation project is nearing completion. We look forward to the completion by the end of the month. These cameras are being installed to help monitor and enhance the safety in our parks. I have asked a couple of officers to join us tonight. Officer Joel Smith and his recruit Officer Steve Ramirez, would you please stand up? These officers are here tonight to be recognized for their life-saving action that took place this past Saturday at one of our amazing downtown events in Washington Park. A male who was attending the event went unconscious and was determined to be in a cardiac arrest. Dispatch was notified and dispatched EMS. Officer Smith and Officer Ramirez, who were on break at the station, heard the call for service. They, along with several, several other officers, immediately responded to the scene. Once on the scene, Officer Smith and Officer Ramirez deployed a departmental AED to two attendees of the event, one of which was an off-duty paramedic who were performing chest compressions. Officer Smith attached the AED and a shock was advised and administered. Ottawa Fire was on, Ottawa Fire was on the scene, and once the shock was administered, they took over primary care of the patient and continued life-saving treatment. I'm very thankful for the two attendees who assisted in providing CPR to allow for first responders to arrive and continue life-saving measures. Measure. I am proud of, I'm proud of our fire department for the level of care they provided, and I am especially proud of Officer Smith and Ramirez for their actions, which played a significant role in saving the life of a citizen who was visiting for another community. I've prepared a letter of commendation for each of you, and again, thank you for your service. Respect.
Then we will hear the Fire Chiefs' report.
The Ottawa Fire Department is currently on pace, once again, on pace, once again, to set a number record of total emergency calls in a year. Currently, projections put us on pace to record over 4,200 total 911 responses with around 3,500 being EMS-related. With the addition of the extra staffing that was placed into service in May, we have seen our average emergency over time go from 32 callbacks per month down to an average of 11 per month. Having the additional staffing has greatly increased our ability to respond and handle all emergency situation in the City of Ottawa and surrounding communities. The Ottawa Fire Department currently has eight individuals enrolled at IVCC for the paramedic program, and one individual currently at the Illinois Fire Service Institution in the Fire Academy. On top of running emergency calls, the Ottawa Fire Department personnel has over 50,000 hours of record training so far for the year of 2024.
Now is time for Commissioner Pearson's report.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that the request to purchase a 2024 Chevy Silverado truck in the amount of $54,646.3 to be used by the park departments to be, be approved and paid for, form the general corporate fund.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Is there anything else?
Yes. Parks and was been happening this summer. Last month, exciting renovation project at Peck Park. The parks now boast a brand-new sports-themed playground with safe... We have the largest flashpad ever built in Ottawa, perfect for those hot summer days. Other upgrades include a shelter for gatherings. Active place for everybody in our community. Allen Park enhancements. Allen Park has also received wonderful updates, partially funding a 500, 506,000 grant from Ozlod. Here's what you can find now, an accessible sidewalk that leads to the upper... A cozy, cozy shelter and bench swing where you can relax and enjoy beautiful views of the Illinois River. On this stone, a new paved... Find... Ag-toss stations and another featuring two chess checker tables. Cutting ceremony at the new playground on Thursday, October 17th, at 1 p.m. Wonderful celebration of all the hard work that has gone into enhancing our parks for everybody. Parking lot. Adding news for our furry friends. This summer, we announced the location of our, and our official name of our new dog park, Bill's Parking Lot. It will be located at 401 East Lafayette Street and is named in memory of Bill Walsh, Sr. We're raising funds for the park amenities. Bill's Oktoberfest, a fun, family-friendly canine hosted by the Ottawa Area Chamber of Criminal... Passengers. That is a great way to support the park and enjoy time with our four-legged friends.
Now is time for Commissioner Baron's report.
Moved by Commissioner Baron that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services between the City of Ottawa and Fairgram for final approval of the phosphorus study for the existing wastewater treatment plant be received and placed on file for public inspection.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes. This engineering services proposal is for follow-up documentation and questions from IEPA regarding the phosphorus removal planning document, document for the existing wastewater treatment plant.
Roll call, please.
Michael Kraut.
Aye.
Gainier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye. Is there anything else?
Yes. These are the 2024 Water, Water Wastewater Project Updates. East Wastewater Treatment Plant. Design is underway for a second wastewater treatment plant along the Fox River near the intersection of Norris Drive and Illinois Route 71 at an estimated cost of $30 million. The initial capacity will be 1 million gallons per day, expandable to 4 million gallons per day as the Route 71 corridor and industrial park develop. The project design will be completed in October 2025, with project construction plan to begin in spring 2026. Long-term control plant sewer separation. The city was recently awarded a $1 million grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity through the Community Development Block Grant Program for Storm Sewer Separation and Combined Sewer Service, Sewer Service, Area 009, on the city's west side. This work consists of installation of 4,000 feet of new storm sewer, of new storm sewer, and 53 new storm structures. This is the next step in city's long-term control plan. Compliance and will prevent stormwater runoff from overloading the wastewater treatment plant.
Next is, oh, roll. Next is Corporation Counsel's report.
Our report to the City Council is broken down by category as follows, and covers the period from January 1st, 2024, to October 15th, 2024. Ordnance violations consist of charges such as curfew, possession of smoking materials by minor, unlawful possession of cannabis, disorderly conduct, dog running at large, excessive noise, unlawful possession of open alcohol in public, unlawful consumption of alcohol by minor, and any other act of, any other act violating a City of Ottawa ordinance. Ordnance violations also include parking violations such as overtime parking, parking in handicapped spots, parking in permitted lots, parking with expired registration, and parking in snow routes. These ordinance violations are handled through administrative adjudication. There have been 1,207 new administrative adjudication files opened in 2024. During the same time, 790 files have been successfully concluded by the payment of fine or dismissal. During this time or period, the city has collected $34,076 in fines through the administrative adjudication. There are nine, there are 81 outstanding liens against properties for the abidment of nuisance violations such as weeds, high grass, and cleaning up garbage. 16 liens have been released this year by property, by the property owner paying the lien in full, which totals $7,255. In the beginning of 2024, the city and AFSMI Local 2819 negotiated a new four-year collective bargaining agreement. Agreement was approved on February 20th, 2024, with an effective date of May 1st, 2024, and an expiration date of April 30th, 2028. Also in 2024, the city and the fire union negotiated a three, a new three-year collective bargaining agreement. This agreement was also approved on February 20th, 2024, with an effective date of May 1st, 2024, and an expiration date of April 30th, 2027. Collective bargaining agreement with the police union was amended last year to extend the agreement by an additional year, and the agreement with the police union will now expire on April 30th, 2026, instead of April 30th, 2025.
There a second? Next is the City Engineers' report.
I would like to provide updates for ongoing and recently completed projects within the city. The annual city street maintenance program, including replacement of curbs, sidewalks, and asphalt pavement, construction at a total cost of $2 million. Here's program, including resurfacing 42 blocks of streets and 14 alleys. Concrete pavement patching was also completed on the West Madison and Erickson Streets. Construction is ongoing for the annual water main replacement and upgrade for project 2024. This year's project includes replacement of water mains on Elm Lane, the drive, West Superior Street, West Washington Street, and Sanger Street at a cost of $950,000. Construction of Green Street is underway to evaluate the roadway above the 500-year flood in order to persevere, preserve a safe route, exit route from the high school in the east during the flooding. Reconstruction and include installation of 38-foot by 12-foot precast block culverts, storm sewer, water main, and related items at a cost of approximately $4 million.
Next is our City Treasurer's report.
We are nearing the completion of the city's fiscal year financial audit. The audit will also include actuarial reports for the city's police and firefighter pensions, as well as the post-retirement benefit actuarial report. The preparation of audit is an extensive project. We, and we appreciate the cooperation between our auditors and city staff to compile all the necessary information. We have a scheduled, we have scheduled a closing meeting with our auditors this week to review the relevant materials. We are also beginning preparation of this year's real estate tax levy determination. We will be reviewing information from the county assessor's, assessor's office regarding total real property assessments, and will also review funding recommendations for our employee pensions. In consideration of those and other obligations, we will determine the amounts necessary and available for delivery of services, of city services. We will present our recommendations and levy requests in December. That concludes my report.
All right. Resolution authorizing. Uh, now it's my report.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the exec- execution of lease agreement number fifty fifty-two thirty-two between the city of Ottawa and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for the I N M Canal To- To- To House, which has been on file for public inspection since October first, twenty twenty-four, be adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, roll call, please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services between the city of Ottawa and Fair Graham for the U S E P A Brownsfield Cleanup Grant Application, which has been on file for public inspection since October first, twenty twenty-four, be adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resol- that a resolution appointing employees and authorizing the execution of employment agreements for Steve Kuhn, Adam Clark, and Matt Bergwald, and authorizing the execution of an addendum to the engineering and consulting agreement for Thomas Duttlinger, which has been on file for public inspection since October first, twenty twenty-four, be adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution extending the time within which the city of Ottawa has to enforce the restrictive covenant for a buyback from Jeremy West for property located at five twenty-eight East Marquette Street be adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution to enter into an agreement for administration and coordination services with N- N C I C G for a communication development block grant coronavirus program be received and placed on file for public inspection.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution to enter into an agreement for administration and coordinate coordination services with N C I C G for a community development block grant for storm sewer separation be received and placed on file for public inspection.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution of support and commitment of stormwater management funds in the amount of two hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred forty dollars for the community development block grant for storm sewer separation be adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution of support and commitment of TIF funds in the amount of twenty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars for the Illinois Regional Site Readiness Program Grant be adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of a side-letter agreement between the city of Ottawa and AFSMI Local twenty-eight nineteen regarding hours of work be received and placed on file for public inspe- inspection.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that ordinance amending chapter one fourteen of the municipal code of the city of Ottawa, LaSalle County, Illinois regarding vehicles for hire be passed and approved.
There a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Whereas domestic violence is defined as abusive behavior that gives one family or household member control, power over another through physical, emotional, sexual, economic, or physical or psychological actions, threats. And whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, identities, socioeconomic levels, backgrounds, beliefs, and abilities. And whereas trauma of domestic violence has long-lasting impacts on survivors, their support system, and our community, and whereas in the United States, one in three women and one in four men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. And whereas, on average, nearly twenty people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, whereas it takes courage for a survivor to seek help. And whereas, Safe Journeys, formerly A D V and S A S, provided free confidential services to more than four hundred and twenty-two survivors in domestic violence and a hundred and ten survivors of sexual violence and supportive persons in South and Livingston Counties. And whereas the city of Ottawa is an important partner in Safe Journeys' vision to create a community where people thrive in safe and healthy relationships, and now therefore be it resolved on this fifteenth day of October, the city of Ottawa proclaims the month of October, twenty twenty-four, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Fine.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a proclamation designi- designating mo- the month of October, twenty twenty-four, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Ottawa be adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Trick or treat hours will be from six P M until eight P M on Halloween. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Move moved by the mayor that this regular meeting be adjourned.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Eiko Kraut.
Aye.
Gagnier.
Aye.
Pearson.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
If everyone would like to give another round of applause. Thank you, everyone. It made it look easy, and I'll be taking notes so I can do a little bit better job. Thanks.